Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Perth County Council this fourth day of April. I'd like to call a meeting to order. If everyone could please bow their head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. We acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Ananasha Bay, who have a longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse Indigenous and Matia and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation and a continued stewardship of the land on which we live and work. Okay, if you have a curinary interest, you can disclose that now or as we go along in our meeting. Next on our thing is to approve the agenda. Anything anybody needs to add or change? If not, we have a motion that the April 4, 2024 Agenda be approved. Moved by Councillor Trunkowski, second by Councillor Orr. All in favor? Carried. Okay, we have 39 items on our consent agenda. Is there any item anyone would like pulled, or they have any questions on it? No? Wow. Okay. We have a motion that council receives the consent agenda items 6.1 to 6.39 and approves the March 21, 2024 council minutes. Moved by Deputy Warden Kellam, second by Councillor Kassenberg. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, so we have no public meetings, no public hearings, and no delegations this morning. So we'll move to staff reports, and the first report is under planning, and it's a Milverton Official Plan Amendment number 12, and I believe we have Jeff with us this morning. Welcome, Jeff. If you may. First.
Okay, so the County of Perth Council has approved official plan amendment 213 on January of 2024. Expanded the Milverton settlement area to include the development areas of the site. Also, the decision was circulated and no appeals were received, and the appeal period lapsed in February of 2024. Milverton Official Plan Amendment number 12 to the Milverton Ward Official Plan is proposing to present the lands as residential, highway commercial, and industrial. And then the related application for zoning by law amendment proposes to establish an R2 zone with special provisions, an R3 zone also with special provisions, highway commercial zone with a holding provision, an industrial zone, M1 zone, NRE2 zone, and institutional zone. So the developer has submitted a plan of subdivision application to develop the property of 72 residential dwelling units, including 27 single detached dwellings, 28 semi-detached dwellings, and 17 street townhouses. Subdivision plan includes two commercial blocks, two industrial commercial blocks, with five new streets and one pedestrian walkway. Milverton Official Plan Amendment number 12 needed to be adopted by the Township of Perth East Council before that amendment can be approved by Perth County Council. Perth East Council adopted the amendment on March 5 of this year, and planning staff are now recommending that Perth County Council approve Milverton Official Plan Amendment number 12. The proposed development includes a recent expansion of the settlement area, which provides connectivity between the Milverton settlement area and the industrial subdivision that is being developed to the south of Line 61, and that development represents a logical expansion of the settlement boundary. Next slide, please. Our Line 12 of the MDS document states that there are reduced MDS1 setback requirements may be permitted, provided that there are four more agricultural uses, residential uses, or dwellings closer to the livestock facilities than the locations developed. Alpkin has submitted MDS calculations that conclude that they are indeed for greater intervening sensitive land uses, and the setback reductions appear to be appropriate in this case. Alpkin has also submitted a scoped environmental impact statement that was also peer reviewed. The findings of the EIS include recommendations for mitigation measures and monitoring that will be included in the plan of subdivision and with approvals and with the plan of subdivision agreement. Next slide, please. Proposed zoning includes reduced rear yard setback requirements, increased lot coverage provisions that are intended to include a more compact development that meets the density targets in the official plan. The proposed residential development will be required to meet all other zoning provisions, including landscaped open space and parking. Alpkin has recognized that highway commercial and industrial zones permit a wide variety of uses, which may vary in impact and compatibility, and as such, they're recommending a holding provision within the zone. Next slide, please. There are several concerns that were raised through the public consultation and the public meetings. There's noise and compatibility concerns, and the public consultation identified a concern with existing Milverton Rod and Gun Club with the proposed development. Noise assessment has concluded that noise attenuation measures through berms and barriers are insufficient when dealing with the impacts of the Rod and Gun Club, and the report recommends that no noise sensitive spaces, including windows facing the south and west directions on the second floor of several of the dwellings, are being prevented through the subdivision design and agreement. A detailed study is also recommended once the massing and design of each lot has been finalized if windows are to be included on the second story of those dwellings. The Township of Perth East has also implemented a bylaw, which is 53-2008, which controls noise within the Township of Perth East. This gives an exemption to the existing Rod and Gun Club. So the bylaw exempts them from noise restrictions from the property. As for drainage, Alpkin submitted a functional drainage servicing report and stormwater management report as part of the subdivision. Consulting engineers reviewed the design and has confirmed that the drainage and servicing can be dealt with through a detailed subdivision design. As previously mentioned, for the environment, a scoped environmental impact statement was authored by Natural Resource Solutions. The findings of the EIS include recommendations for mitigation measures and monitoring that are included in the plan of subdivision, the subdivision agreement, and with industrial site plan approvals. Traffic briefly submitted by traffic mobility, and the study concluded that study intersections are expected to operate within acceptable level of service during the weekday peak hours under future total conditions. The development costs, the Alpkin is required to pay for the standard development costs associated with the development. Existing frontages on Road 131 will maintain access to the highway. Planning staff recommends that the Perth County Council receives official plan amendment number 12 and approves official plan amendment 12 to the Milverton Ward, which was submitted by Caroline Baker on behalf of the landowner. Application is consistent with the 2020 provincial policy statement that conforms with County of Perth official plan, and in our opinion, it represents good planning. Will Alpkin answer any questions?
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Are there any questions or comments of the report? No? Okay. We have a motion that council receives a Milverton OPA 12, 1803018, Ontario Inc. report, and that council approves the official plan amendment number 12 to the Milverton Ward Official Plan submitted by Caroline Baker on behalf of 1803018, Ontario Inc., affecting lands described as Lot 6, Concession 3, Milverton Ward Township of Perth East. Moved by Councillor Smith, second by Councillor Aitchison. All those in favor? All those in favor? I think we have enough. Two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Carried. Okay. Jeff? We're going to move next to corporate services, and the first item is the February 2024 Forestry Inspectors Report. And Tyler, what's yours?
Perfect, thank you. So through the warden before council is the February 2024 Forestry Inspectors Report, prepared by Marvin Smith, the Perth County Forestry Inspector. In the month of February, Marvin completed seven inspections in response to the submission of a NOI, and one inspection in response to the request from a landowner. I'd be happy to take any questions, comments, or concerns for them to Marvin.
Okay, thanks, Tyler. Any questions on the report? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that council receives the February 2024 Forestry Inspectors Report for information. Moved by Councillor McKenzie, second by Councillor Kassenberg. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, the next item is the 2024 tax policy, tax ratios and tax rates. And we have Corey with us this morning. Good morning, Corey. And yours?
For Warren Egits. So the report before you and council is the tax ratio and tax rates for 2024. Accounting council is required to set tax policy regarding all tax classes based on a fair and equitable tax system. When tax policy changes are being made, contemplated, it's important to consider the immediate implications and impacts on all the classes and the ultimate policy objectives being pursued. With Perth County and having two single tiers, our highest assessment are in two classes, residential and farmland class, and is to note that these are the two highest impacted classes when talking tax policy. Again, the rates and the ratios within the report, the staff recommend that maintaining the current tax ratios in '23 for the 2024 tax year, and in relation to that is because of the provincial freeze on reassessment. They've still unknown when the new reassessment is, and to understand this, tax assessment values are still based on 2016 values. 2020 was the year that the reassessment was supposed to happen, and COVID had freeze on that reassessment. The report is there. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks, Corey. Any questions on the report? Councillor McDermott?
Yeah, Corey, on page 139. It's the sentence unless tax ratios are within the range of fairness, the decision to reduce any tax ratio is permanent, as it cannot be increased at a former level if it is above the range of fairness. So we're at the top level of everything, right?
That is correct, and actually, commercial and industrial rates are above the range of fairness.
Okay, so if you, so those rates, they're above the range of fairness, so if we reduce them the slightest little bit, if it's still above the range of fairness, we can never put it back up to the original ratio that you currently see in this report.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? If not, then we have a motion that council receives a 2024 tax policy, tax ratios and tax rates report for information, and that council adopt the same tax ratios for 2024 as those of 2023 for all respective classes. Need a mover and a seconder? Moved by Councillor McDermott, second by Councillor Orr. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, and our next item is 2024 temporary borrowing bylaw. Corey?
Thanks, Warden Egits, and council. This report is in relation to essentially a cash flow with each municipality. Tax revenue comes in quarterly, and based on that, a potential of cash flow might occur in, this allows the municipality to draw on a draft, like an overdraft essentially, and allow us to draw on that. The borrowing bylaw is based on, up until the June of the year is 50% of our budget revenues, and then to September 30th, it's about 25%. That in itself would give us, allow us in the third quarter to draw on about $11 million, which is 25% of the budget revenues for that. It's not anticipated that these will be used in 2024, so if there's any questions on the report, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks, Corey. Any questions on the report or comments? No? Okay. That council receives the 2024 temporary borrowing bylaw report for information. Moved by Councillor McKenzie, second by Councillor Duncan. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, we're zipping right along here. Now we're moving to public works, and the first one is the Renovation and Connecting Link Project. And we have John and Bill with us this morning, so welcome, gentlemen. And yours?
Thank you, Warden Egits, and good morning, council. This report summarizes the allowances and change orders for the five-year-old Reno and Connecting Link project to date. This project carried a $200,000 contingency allowance, which represents approximately 4% of the total construction cost. For renovation projects of similar scope, it's common to see contingency or change orders in the range of 8% to 14% of the construction cost. And while not the same type of scope, I did take a look back on this particular building that we built back in 2016 for about $5 million, and in this project, we did carry a lot of the same type of allowances and a 10% contingency allowance. In previous project update reports, staff have informed council that the highest risk to the project is the utilization of contingency allowance. Currently approved change orders total just over 165,000, or approximately 83% of the contingency allowance. There are pending change orders to be dealt with, along with retaining wall excavations and parking lot reconstruction. Given this, the contingency allowance will be over the $200,000 allotment and require an increase in funds to complete the project. The report outlines the allowances carried on this project and summarizes the change orders approved to date. Except for the fire alarm and contingency allowances, all other allowances are expected to be on target or slightly under their allotment. There's a $28,000 overage in the fire alarm allowance, and that's due to an unforeseen upgrade to the existing courthouse fire system, so it coordinates and communicates with the new system in the Reno. The extra $28,000 is intended to be covered under the contingency allowance, but has not been accounted for to date. One of the pending change orders that we're currently dealing with is the replacement of deficient sanitary and storm infrastructure. This has recently been priced by the contractor sub and is significantly higher than expected. The project team is working with the contractor to find other options and a more reasonable cost. Accounting for the overage in the fire alarm allowance and estimating the pending change orders, staff anticipate that $285,000 to be covered under the contingency allowance. At this stage of the project, the majority of the scope and coordination changes have been addressed, and change orders of this nature should be minimal moving forward. However, pending excavation work and parking lot reconstruction could encounter further unforeseen conditions. In consultation with the project team, staff are recommending an increase of $150,000 to the contingency allowance. That increase would bring the contingency allowance to a total of $350,000, representing less than 7% of the construction cost. Additional contingency would only be utilized if necessary. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, John. Any questions of the report? Councillor McDermott?
Are you sure $150 will cover you?
That through the warden, we're fairly confident that the hundred, extra $150 will cover you.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion that council receives a renovation and connecting link project allowances report, and that council approves a five-year-old renovation and connecting link project contingency allowance increase of $150,000. Moved by Councillor Trunkowski, second by Deputy Warden Kellam. All those in favor? Carried. And our next report is tender results for Perth Line 86 resurfacing. Bill, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Warden Egits. Through you. Good morning, council. This project is with regards to capital project RS0020, which is the resurfacing of Perth Line 86 from Tremaine Avenue, the school easterly to Perth Road 131. The project involves a placement of approximately 10,000 tons of hot mix asphalt and related construction work specified in the tender document. The bid was posted on the county's online bidding system. There were 15 registered plant acres, and we had six submissions. Summary of the bid results is provided in the report, along with the recommendation to award tender 2024-031-02, Perth Line 86 resurfacing to GIP Paving, Inc., for their tendered price of $1,188,000, which represents a low bid of the submissions received. GIP has worked for the county in the past, formerly operating as Cocoa Paving. They completed the capital reconstruction of Perth Line 36 in 2020. That project included the placement of about 4,000 ton of asphalt. Just to note, this project, a portion of its limits are a boundary road with Wellington County. We've been working with Wellington throughout the tendering and project planning stages. We shared the tender results with them, and they are supportive of the results and the recommendation to award. The tender submission from GIP is within the project budget, which is set at $1,575,000. The bid also includes $100,000 contingency. The tender included provisional items for the supply and placement of granular shoulder material, as well as the use of aramid fiber in the asphalt mix. These are discretionary items that may be utilized within the project. Fiber reinforced asphalt pavement is a process where aramid fibers are blended with the hot mix at the production plant. The addition of the fibers in the asphalt mix strengthens the mix to reduce rutting and slow the effective reflective cracking. The reinforced asphalt mix has been used successfully in Wellington County and other road authorities in Ontario under similar application. It has not been used in Perth County, however, the desired results are similar to that of the STAMMY application that we did on Perth Road 139 in 2022, I believe. Again, Wellington is supportive of the use of provisional items as required for this project. I'll note also that if both or all provisional items are used to their full extent, the project will remain under budget, and staff are recommending award of the bid to GIP. And a construction schedule has not been established for this project. We'll enter those discussions following bid award. Just to note that single lane traffic is, will be maintained throughout the duration of that project, and it's expected to be two weeks or less to complete. That's all I have for my report.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Any questions or comments of the report? Councillor Trunkowski?
Thank you, Warden, through you. It's just maybe a comment slash request to our department. Continued diligence with regard to traffic safety, both from the public perspective and worker safety. I know we do an excellent job overseeing that, just please, please continue that diligent work.
Okay. Councillor Kassenberg?
Yeah, can I just check on the intent? The intent is that this will happen in the current calendar year?
Through the warden, that is correct.
Okay. Do we expect it to be later in the calendar year? Like, is that a risk in this project?
Through you, the warden. I would expect this project to go early in the calendar year, just given the nature of the scope.
Okay, any other questions? No? Okay, we have a motion that council receives a tender results 2024-031-02, Perth Line 86 resurfacing report, and that council award tender 2024-031-02 to GIP Paving, Inc., and that council authorize the warden and the clerk to execute the agreement between the Corporation of the County of Perth and GIP Paving, Inc. Need a mover and a seconder? Moved by Councillor Kassenberg, second by Councillor McKenzie. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, thanks, gentlemen. Now we're moving to the warden activity report. Any questions about where I was or what I did for the month of March? Oh, okay. So we have a motion that council receives the warden's activity report, March 2024, report for information. Moved by Deputy Warden Kellam, second by Councillor Smith. All those in favor? Carried. Excuse me, we do have a number of bylaws. So the first bylaw is 3968-2024, and it's a 2024 tax requisition, and that bylaw 3968-2024 be read a first, second, and third time, and finally pass this fourth day of April of April 2024. Moved by Councillor Orr, second by Councillor Kassenberg. All those in favor? Carried. Our next one is 3969-2024. It's a 2024 tax ratio. It's that bylaw 3969-2024 be read a first, second, third time, and finally pass this fourth day of April of 2024. Moved by Councillor McDermott, second by Councillor Aitchison. All those in favor? Carried. The third one is the 2024 tax reduction. That bylaw 3970-2024 be read a first, second, and third time, and finally pass this fourth day of April 2024. Moved by Councillor Smith, second by Councillor Duncan. All those in favor? Carried. Then we have bylaw, it's our 2024 borrowing. That bylaw 3971-2024 be read a first, second, and third time, and finally pass this fourth day of April 2024. Moved by Councillor McKenzie, second by Councillor McDermott. All in favor? Carried. Then we have road rehabilitation bylaw, and it's bylaw 3972-2024 be read a first, second, and third time, and finally pass this fourth day of April 2024. Moved by Councillor Kassenberg, second by Councillor McDermott. All in favor? Carried. Do we have any notice of motions? Any other business? Councillor McKenzie?
Yes, I think it's back to the recommendation that I guess Corey made, and during the past year, so there's been several resolutions come by. I'm wondering if there would be an advantage for you to take this to the Western wardens to do with reassessment and ask the province to move ahead with this, and I realize there's probably a provincial election in there that they're waiting to hold off on, but this is dragging on for quite a ways, for a long time, and, you know, we could, we could do a resolution or a letter and copy it to municipalities, but it might have more input if you brought it up at the Western wardens and they got on side and supported that.
Sure, and we have Western wardens tomorrow, actually.
Oh, really? Okay. Yeah.
So, yeah, I can, I will bring that up and ask it.
Okay. Yeah.
We can have a look at it, because, yes, it's.
Well, I'm sure it's the same problem, no matter where you go.
Yep.
It needs to be addressed, and it isn't.
Well, it's been seven years, like.
No.
So, yes, I agree. But I will bring that up. Do we need a motion for that?
Just try. It's okay.
Okay. All right, good. Thanks, Walter. Anyone else have any other business? Councillor Trunkowski?
Thanks, Warden, through you. And it's going back to our last meeting, where at county council where we discussed review of the current tree bylaw. Just wanted to restate for the record, I've been getting calls from people thinking that the tree laws, the tree bylaw will be changed automatically. That's not the case. It will be reviewed. It will be reviewed through the AG working group, and then any findings or recommendations that come out of that group will come to this council for this council's review before any changes are made. So I just wanted to restate that for the record, because I'm getting, the feedback I'm getting from the public is the wrong signal, so just wanted to reiterate what we said at the last meeting, so, oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything? No? Okay. Any announcements? No? Okay. Then we do have a need for a closed session, so we'll have a motion here that council move in the closed session at approximately 9:29 a.m. in accordance with section 239 of the Municipal Act S.0.2001(c)(25) to consider a matter pertaining to legal advice pending litigation verbal update and a matter pertaining to legal advice litigation and another verbal update. I need a mover and a seconder? Moved by Councillor McDermott, second by Councillor Duncan. All those in favor? Thanks, everyone else. Enjoy the rest of your day. Enjoy the rest of your day. We have a motion that bylaw thirty-nine seventy-three dash twenty-twenty-four being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the Corporation of the County of Perth at its regular meeting held April four, twenty-twenty-four is read a first, second, and third time, and finally passed April fourth, twenty-twenty-four. Moved by Counsel McKenzie, second by Counsel Smith. All in favor? Carried. And the last motion of the morning, that council be adjourned at eleven fifteen AM. Moved by Counsel McDermott, second by Counsel Duncan. All those in favor? Carried. Thanks, everyone. Have a great day. Enjoy the rest of your day. Bye.